Well, we're gonna call this meeting to order at 7:04. Good evening. Welcome to the September 10th, 2025, meeting of the Wilmington School Committee. Forgive our late arrival, we're just returning from an executive session. First item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Moving right along to our consent agenda, we have approval of minutes 8/20/25. Is there a motion? Dr. Bryson, second, Mr. Ragsdale, all those in favor? Unanimous. We have disposal of obsolete or broken piano. Is there a motion? Dr. Bryson, is there a second? Mr. Ragsdale, I can confirm that we checked with Mr. Ferrara, there is no feasible way for the piano to be refurbished, donated, anything else, other than disposal.
Such a sad note to read.
That being said, all those in favor of disposal? Unanimous. Thank you. We have warrants, grants, seven through nine revolving, eight through 12, local eight through 12, food service, six through nine, circuit breaker, one and two, carry forward, five and six, capital six through nine, special education, six through nine, and payroll, eight twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, and nine, ten, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion? Mr. Ragsdale, is there a second? Mr. Turner, all those in favor? And those are all unanimous. Thank you. That concludes our consent agenda. Real quick, before we move on to the superintendent's report, I just wanna take a very, very brief moment and welcome our new student representative, Jackson Kylie. Jackson, we're thrilled to have you here. Thanks for joining us. Look forward to any thoughts or insights you might have through the years.
Thank you.
And when's your first report? Next week? Next two weeks? Do we know?
He's cooking.
Yeah. Okay. Awesome. No pressure, but we look forward to it. So, thank you. With that, we can move to the superintendent's report with Dr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, a couple things. First is welcoming new staff in your packet. You can see by building our new staff, this is not only people new to the district, but also people who have moved up, promotions, et cetera. They were part of our new staff orientation, which was a tremendous event, well organized. Thank you, Ms. Elliott. And then you can see those names there. And then on the third page, you can have, you can see our 25-year-and-more club. The experience and the wealth of dedication to this district is palatable. Opening was, this probably was the smoothest opening I've had in 34 years in education. So, congratulations and thank you to all the staff in the Wilmington Public Schools. You know, we had our first round with grades one through 12, and then we had our preschool and kindergarten students come in the next day. Went extremely well. And transportation went, has, and actually, you know, being new to the district and learning, it's quite a jigsaw puzzle. So, congratulations to the Transportation Department. But everything worked really well with that. I think we had a couple people questioning pickups or bus stops or times, and the buses are actually running well on time. So, that is a report for the opening. I don't know if there's any particular questions? Sure.
Just a quick one, I would wanna comment on the transportation piece. Ms. Fratton and team did a phenomenal job. We know that can be a really difficult thing, and it started tremendously well this year. So, it's a real, off to a really good start, and that's, that's through a lot of hard effort all summer, so.
Right. And I was in every single school in the first couple days. You know, it's hard to be in eight schools at once in one day, but definitely visited all the schools. The welcoming of the students coming back, the engagement going on there. I also had the privilege of reading in a third grade class at the Woburn School today, which was a lot of fun. So, really off to a great start, and the faculty here is obviously a strength of the district. The third thing on my report is the Memorandum of Understanding, a little history for those. This is a standard MOU that is provided by the District Attorney for Middlesex County. So, all the towns use it. You know, the purpose of our SRO is to create that connection between our students and the faculty, serve as a resource and a communication tool to make sure we are meeting the needs of our students, and really kind of make sure that we're using resources effectively and appropriately. But that is signed, and that is shared for your review as well.
Thank you. Mr. Golden.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Thompson. I just was, with regard to this MOU, is this like an annual thing that's re-upped? Because I feel like we didn't necessarily.
Yes, annual, each year. And this year, there were, there were a couple new laws that were passed that had to be reflected in the MOU.
Thank you.
Other questions? Dr. McColdy.
Yeah, around the SRO and everything like that, and understood you just started in the district and everything, but I was thinking, I think it seems like such a really nice program that we have, and it would be good to kinda hear maybe from the SRO people in the future about like, what are some benefits of having this here? Because a lot of people can walk in, and they're like, oh, man, I see a police officer in the school. Like, what does that mean?
Yeah.
So, it might be good to just kinda highlight like the benefits of the program and everything in the future, and like kinda what is the role to the community?
Yeah. You want me to comment a little bit more on that now, or do we wanna have that?
If you can, and I know you're only a couple months in, so.
Yeah, so, you know, so they've done everything from supporting new drivers to making sure kids are getting resources that they have, answering parent questions, legal pieces, but basically building that relationship between law enforcement and our students, so it's not, you know, something that's, that's not positive. You know, District Attorney, oh my god, why can't I remember her?
Marion Wright.
Right. We just had a meeting, the chief and I, on Wednesday, Tuesday morning in Lexington, you know, and, you know, her whole purpose is to provide, you know, ensure public safety and safety in our schools, and having the SROs in our schools is a definite deterrent to any sort of piece. They are a regular piece of our, of our, of our schools and how we, how we work, and, you know, we've got, I mean, we're lucky and willing to have two. Most, I mean, the minimum requirement is one statewide, so that shows a commitment between the town, obviously, our Police Department and the schools, to make sure that that safety is done. So, we can try to get a little more examples and maybe have, you know, some stories shared at the next meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Ragsdale.
I think that anyone who reads this MOA would be confident that the relationship that it delineates, that it spells out between sort of the school and the Police Department is, is really the right one, and is really a healthy one. There's a lot of emphasis in the, in the MOA about the proper role of the SRO in schools, and in particular, that there is always a predisposition to have the school take the lead on any issue, that even if there's something that could, you know, possibly be, you know, considered a, a police matter or a legal matter, that there's always a presumption that the best people to handle it are the school. The school discipline is always, you know, is always the first, second, and third option, and that the role of the SRO to get sort of more heavily involved in a matter really, really kicks in when there's like a true issue of safety involved, and, but that otherwise, there's always a presumption of school discipline, and that the school administration should be handling, you know, nearly, nearly everything except something that truly requires law enforcement to, to be exercising their law enforcement powers. And I think that that's exactly the right, the right relationship.
Yeah, and it's very clear in Mass. General Law and in the MOU that the police in our schools are not there for student discipline. That is a school's responsibility.
And one question I had is that there, the MOA talks about that annually, the, essentially the teachers in the school are also receive training in the relationship with the SRO, and I was curious when that happens. I don't know if that's something that would be at the, sort of at the beginning of the year, or something later on. I'm assuming it probably would happen later on, because there's so much you need to get done right at the start of the year.
Right.
But I would, I would hope that, you know, in addition to, of course, you know, you having, you know, with your meetings with the chief and so forth, that, that we are making sure that, that the, the staff receive some training as well in how to properly interface with the, with the SRO.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. Other questions? Comments?
I'll just add one as a, as a, I guess, to be picked up at a later date. I was here picking up my son, one of the first days of school, and the High School Resource Officer came outside, it was right before dismissal, and there was somebody, I think, over on the basketball courts, and he kindly said, you know, these grounds, essentially the grounds are closed during the school day. So, I was just curious, it made me think of it, if we've had any other reports of issues, or if people are sort of taking to it. So, again, not something that we need for tonight, but maybe a couple of weeks from now, we can see how that, that new policy is working for us.
Yeah, we have had, well, early on, because one of the neighboring districts was not, had not started as early as we did, there were some kids there, they were very polite, and.
Sure.
And we did have an incident with a parent who was there who was not as polite, but we did get a lot of support from our local Police Department with that, and we will keep reminding people as we see them.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're of two thus far, so.
All right.
The signs are up.
Yeah.
Reading them is optional, but the signs are up.
Thank you. Hearing nothing else. I guess that concludes the superintendent's report, and we can move to public comment. We received no written public comment. We did have one individual sign up to make public comment in person. Tomorrow, Richards is tomorrow here. Tomorrow's not here. All right. We will move along to new business. First item of new business is the Educational Assistance Contract ratification. So, we, as I mentioned at the beginning, we met in executive session this evening to discuss the agreement that was reached between the Ed Assistance Bargaining Unit and the School Committee. Happy to report that the Ed Assistance had voted to ratify on their end, and so we met to, to discuss on our end. Certainly, Mr. Turner, Ms. Elliott, if you guys wanna say anything, I know you guys were pretty involved, but I just wanted to, I'll take a, Mr. Jarrow too, I'll take a brief moment and just express my appreciation and gratitude, not only to those Ed Assistants who are on the negotiating team, but all of them. You know, I know it's a, I know better now, admittedly, but it's a tough job, and they are so important to our, our classrooms and to our teachers and our students. So, you know, thrilled that we were able to get what I think is some, some improvements in the contract and make some progress. So, glad to see that, that went well, so. Anybody else?
I second that comment.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. And again, to Ms. Elliott and Mr. Jarrow for the hours and hours of work that they put in behind the scenes to get these things over the finish line, so. Thank you. With that, I certainly would entertain a motion to, what do we say, to?
Birthday agreement?
Okay. Well, I thought there was something about signatures, but, all right, how about?
That was taken care of in executive session.
Understood. All right. A motion to approve the MOA between the School Committee and the Educational Assistance. Motion by Mr. Golden, second by Mr. Turner. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Thank you. That brings us to approval, excuse me, approval of student activity accounts. Mr. Jarrow.
Thank you. So, annually, the School Committee is required to approve the student activity accounts we have throughout the district. So, you have a list and you have a packet of high school, middle school, and then the elementary school. So, just a request to approve the student activity accounts for the 2025-26 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Jarrow. Mr. Turner.
One quick thing, if the Policy Subcommittee is available, it would be very helpful to review JJF, which manages the balances that are allowable in these accounts, because that portion has not changed in a great deal of time, and there may be a need for update to that. So, I could provide additional feedback to them as, as appropriate.
Was it JJF?
JJF. It's, it's page 374 of 461, if you're playing at home.
Okay. It feels like it should be in here.
It's not in that one.
I don't know. I'm sure it references a few things.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Any other questions on the student activity accounts? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion. Mr. Turner?
I move to approve the 2025-2026 student activity accounts as listed.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Golden. Hearing no other discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Jarrow. Brings us to old business. We have an update on the Town Hall School Admin Building. Dr. Thompson, you gonna take this one, or is it gonna be Mr. Jarrow?
I don't know. We didn't, we didn't flip a coin to see who would, who would start on that, but.
Wrestle me?
But I would, if, we didn't do pistols at 50 paces either, so I guess I will start off, because he's, he's making notes over there. But we have had several meetings about the Town Hall School Administration Building. The last official building meeting was on the 21st, where we received project updates, time schedules, made a decision on furniture. Of course, the funny part of that was the coloring of that, and most obvious, very obvious that most of the men, and myself included, around the table, were not allowed at home to make color choices, so it was quite, it was quite comical, but we did make, we did follow the recommendation of the professional on that, so we have color choices for the furnishings. And the good news is, is the project is on schedule, under budget, on budget, slightly under budget, and we are looking to, the plan is to finish the building and then get the technology people in there, getting all the wires connected and what have you, and in line to move in probably late December, I think is what people are thinking at this point, so. I don't know if you have some other details to add, Paul?
Yeah, no, I think you hit most everything. Couple things, the Superintendent of Public Buildings will have some moving companies going through both the Roman House and the Art Center, the middle of this month, to look at items that have to be moved, and they'll come up with a price and so forth, and that'll be part of the project. So, we have a bit of work to do in the Roman House, my office excluded.
Especially.
But we have items in the attic and so forth, so there's a lot of work we still have to do. So, we purging some things and then putting other things in boxes that will be provided for us and so forth. So, it'll be a pretty busy fall, early winter, getting ready to, to move, right now, hopefully, toward the, the end of December.
Yeah, so it looks like by the first of the year, the building should be fully occupied and up, up and running.
That's the goal. The first thing is, the construction companies have to turn the building over to the town, so the town doesn't have access to the building right now. So, that goal was sometime in October, as, as Dr. Thompson said, and IT and get some groups in there to get everything set up, and then they'll start to, to move groups in. And we're not there yet, as far as the timing of, you know, certain groups from the Town Hall going for, like, how's that work and so? But that'll flush out in the next month or so.
Very good. Mr. Turner, you were there at the last meeting.
Yeah, and one quick question on, on the moving piece. You mentioned the Art Center and Roman House. There are some individuals in the high school as well that will move into the Town Hall, correct? So, do we need to have them scoped into that as well? It's a smaller number.
The stuff they have here, it's really Lisa. Yeah. Who doesn't, has maybe one file cabinet with the stuff, so there's really nothing there. And then technology, I think a lot of the stuff will stay here.
Okay.
But certain things will go over, but they're more, and if, if stuff's left, you just have public buildings bring it over, or, you know, throw it in someone's car. It's not a lot of stuff.
I didn't know, I wasn't aware of how much was here from those people who had, had to move in here in the past. Okay. Cool. Thank you. Okay. Any questions? Dr. McColdy.
Yep. No, thank you for the overview, and Paul, for all the details on that. Question I have is, we'll be vacating the Roman House. What happens to the Roman House?
So, typically.
That is the running question.
Yeah, so typically, in a school building, if it's taken out of commission, the School Committee's asked to turn it over to the town, and then at that point, the town has a reuse committee, if you will, that will determine what to do with that facility. I assume the Roman House follows a similar track.
Okay.
So, when the Roman House is empty and no one's in there, I think there'd be a decision made, does the School Department turn it over to the town, who then has a reuse committee to determine what they wanna do with it.
The, the one thing that we didn't discuss at those meetings, or I don't think has been discussed at, at the Select Board, is, in theory, we could choose to turn over the Roman House with the caveat that if it is not used for school purposes, we would want the land available for school purposes. So, there's a bit of a caveat, like, if we were to turn over a full piece of property, that would be, we'd done and dusted with that. But in this particular case, because of its location, ideally, if there were a town use, it wouldn't be in that location, and they'd move the building so we could use that space for something appropriate to the high school. Certainly, the town could choose to have another department hosted there, if we turned it over with no caveat. So, I don't know if we have any level of control over that or not, once we decide we no longer need it for its current function?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. I know, I've been here, we turned over, I think, I think the Whitfield School might have been turned over since I've been here, I think. I think the Swain was already, and that, you know, they did what, you know, it's really just field space now, but I don't know. I mean, those are specifics that would have to be discussed with the town manager and the Select Board and so forth, on how that works. But, and I'm assuming the Roman House is gonna follow the same process as a school building.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question. Okay, that concludes old business. We have other reports, Subcommittee reports. Are there any Subcommittee reports? Mr. Ragsdale.
So, the School Building Committee actually had its July meeting canceled, so we didn't actually meet then. The next School Building Committee meeting is scheduled for later in September, but in the intervening time, there was a public hearing by the Finance Committee to make a recommendation on the article for special town meeting. That was, I believe, on September 2nd, and the Finance Committee voted to recommend approval of the article at the special town meeting warrant, and so then that just remains for us to actually attend town meeting coming up on this Saturday morning, which is in our list of notable items, but I will mention it here as well.
Very good.
So, that, that is next, next up on the, on the School Building Committee agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. Dr. McColdy.
I have a question about the school vote and everything. Should I wait a little bit, or is now a good time?
If it's directly related to the work that that committee has done, then by all means, you can ask Mr. Ragsdale.
Yeah, so for the vote, will someone from the School Committee have an opportunity to speak to the community, or is it all gonna be driven by the town manager and the Finance Committee?
From the, I'm sorry, to clarify, from the School Committee or from the Building Committee?
I would say the School Committee, and the reason why is, you know, we are the ones that are kinda stewards of the school district, and our voice should be heard, and why we believe this is, we took a vote on it, it was unanimous in support. I think the community deserves to hear from us why. I kinda feel a lot of the conversation is around more logistics and placement and everything, and we're kinda losing the big picture on education and children.
I mean, my understanding is that, that we are not formally part of the presentation, that there will be a 30-ish, 35-ish minute presentation by the town manager to, you know, basically go through the history of the project and give, you know, residents the information that they need before taking the vote. But then, at that point, you know, as part of the natural debate, obviously, School Committee members, we can make comments at the microphone, we can identify ourselves as School Committee members when doing so, we could certainly make reference to the vote that we took and sort of the endorsement of the committee as a whole of the project, but that there's not a, there's not a sort of a formal place on the warrant where we speak at the beginning of the meeting. But the, the town manager, I mean, rather, sorry, the town moderator will obviously, you know, respect School Committee comments and recognize School Committee members to speak at the microphones.
Sure.
And I, I would suspect, as he has done in the past, if there are questions posed by members of the community that sort of directly relate to like the operations of the district, that, you know, Dr. Thompson, or, or Paul, or somebody would be given an opportunity to speak to that as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah, in the present, if I may, in the presentation, there are, there is a slide that talks about the educational benefits. You're right. And we talk sometimes more about the building versus the educational benefits a new school have for our kids, but there is a slide, I believe, that, that talks about, and that was, that came from discussions with school people.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions and/or Subcommittee-related reports? Mr. Turner?
Different Subcommittee report?
Please.
I'm not gonna steal their thunder, but at the, last night's WEF meeting, they mentioned they did a little bit of research on the amount of donations they've made over the last 10 years. They're going to be doing a press release, because it's, it's a pretty fantastic number. I'm not gonna, like I said, I'm not gonna share it tonight, but.
Not gonna steal their thunder?
Not gonna steal their thunder, but when I heard it, I almost fell off my chair. It's just, it's amazing the effort a fairly small group has made for our district over the last 10 years. It's just incredible, and their continued dedication, and they're doing more fundraising, and they're doing more outreach to businesses. They support such important things like the art fair and the STEM fair, and just a range of other activities for our teachers. It's, it's incredible what they do, and, and I'm looking forward to reading the press release when they, when they put it out.
Do you, did they indicate when that would be coming?
Soon.
Okay. Keep your eyes open for the press release from?
How's that for a teaser? You know, it's coming soon.
I love it.
To a theater near you.
All right. Thank you. Other Subcommittee reports? Okay. Hearing none. Correspondence?
None this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Excuse me, that brings us to future School Committee dates and other notable items. Coming up on tomorrow night, September 11th, we have open houses for the Wilmington High School and Wildwood at Carter Lane. This coming Saturday, September 13th, is the special town meeting regarding the school building project, which we've been talking about just now, and I'm sure most people have seen or heard. The meeting begins at 9:00 AM here in the high school. It is expected to be well-attended. Folks are being advised to try to get here by 8:00 AM. There is free childcare available, there's a family-friendly room, although childcare signups, I think, have closed, so.
There's left is the family-friendly.
So, there is, but there is a family-friendly room, there's a flyer, the flyer's on the district website, all of the information is there. That'll be followed shortly, on September 16th is Town Voting Day. Also, regarding the school building project, polls are open from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Precincts one, two, and three vote at the Wilmington Senior Center, four, five, and six vote at Town Hall on Glen Road. If you have a question about what district you're in, you can contact the Clerk's Office, they're more than happy to help. They're more than happy to help. September 19th is our, the school committee's special session working group at 1:00 in the conference room at the Roman House. 9:23 is the next MSBA School Committee Project Meeting at 6:30 PM here in the Large Group Instruction Room, and on September 24th is the next regular meeting of the Wilmington School Committee at 7:00 PM here in this room. What did we miss? Mr. Golden?
Thank you. I would just like to add, with regard to the votes, if you can't make town meeting, you still can vote in the September 16th vote. I had heard there was some confusion about that. Some folks going to the clerk's office asking about that. If you can't make town meeting, you, your vote still matters for the other vote, and vice versa. If you can't make the Tuesday vote, because you're going out of town, but you can make town meeting, that vote counts too. So, it's not like you can't make one, it doesn't count at all. Vote when you can, vote however you feel like.
Thank you, Mr. Golden.
Question, is there, isn't, is there early voting option?
There is currently.
There is.
It expires when?
I, that, I don't know. I think it does expire Friday.
Yeah, there's early, early voting up until Friday.
Yeah. Early, to be precise, early voting for the September 16th.
Right.
Ballot. Ballot piece, not the town meeting. Town meeting, you have to attend in person.
Town meeting, you have to be there. Yep. That's right.
Yeah, and it's just at the clerk's office in room 12 at Town, at Town Hall.
Thank you.
You just go to Town Hall, and they'll, and you can vote up until Friday during regular Town Hall hours.
Thank you. Dr. McColdy, do you have your hand up?
It was about the early voting.
Thank you. Paul? Did you want to say that?
I was just going to say that it is two votes, and if the school's to pass, it has